Seeing none, we'll move on to the report of the committee on records. Counselor Green.
Yes, I'd like to report with the minutes from the last meeting.
The records committee report be accepted.
We have a motion second that the committee on records report be accepted. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Move on to appointments committee. Counselor Bean.
President, the city council appointments committee met tonight. All members are present. We had two new appointments before us. Firefighters with Pittsburgh Fire Department, Jared C. Roy and Andrew R. Doughty.
They both appeared before the committee, and the committee voted unanimously to approve the mayor's recommendation to hire them as firefighters.
Motion to accept the appointments committee report.
Second.
We have a motion second to accept the appointments committee report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. If you come into the well here, the clerk will swear you in. And family and friends, anybody can move around anywhere they want to take pictures after they get sworn in. We'll opportunity to take pictures with grandma and girlfriend and brothers and whatever you'd like, so feel comfortable.
Significant others.
Just raise your right hand if you're penitent to me to take an oath. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Owe and discharge all the duties.
Owe and discharge all the duties.
Combed and applying.
Combed and applying.
As a permanent pitcher applied by.
Permanent pitcher applied by.
So.
Congratulations. Thank you. Be safe. Congratulations. Be safe. Congratulations. Be safe. Congratulations. How much you can't. You're cold. You're gonna get it. Yeah. Yeah.
Congratulations. Welcome boy.
Congratulations. How much you can't. You're cold. You're gonna get it. Next up. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
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 Manners matter.
Thank you.
Oh.
Be safe.
Oh, okay.
Congratulations.
That's nice.
Be safe.
I was texting my father, not my wife.
Congratulations.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Good luck.
Let me get out of the way.
Congratulations.
No, 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 no.
Manners matter.
Yeah, I'm in witness relocation.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's not working.
That's nice.
Your father.
I was texting my father, not my wife.
Now's your chance.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
You won't get this chance again, so anyone who wants a photo, do it.
Let me get out of the way.
That is great.
No, 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 no.
Good deal.
Yeah, I'm in witness relocation.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah.
We're supposed to leave those pictures right now in the special hour.
It's not working.
We gotta text.
Your father.
The mic's on.
Now's your chance.
I need some of that justice.
You won't get this chance again, so anyone who wants a photo, do it.
I'm not gonna digest it.
That is great.
I have a paper copy that tells me that he's gonna say something.
I agree.
I need some of that justice.
We're supposed to leave those pictures right now in the special hour.
Yeah, yeah.
We gotta text.
Hey, Marcus.
The mic's on.
Marcus.
I need some of that justice.
I took them for a ride.
I'm not gonna digest it.
I just put that in for the guy.
Hey, Marcus.
I should have been.
Marcus.
Moving forward.
I'm trying my best to get people to not think that I'm pulling the strings behind
Recessed hearing, oh ninety-four fifteen.
the scenes.
The Pittsburgh City Council pursuant to the unanimous affirmative vote on April twenty-second,
But you're on.
two thousand and fifteen, on petition thirty-eight fifteen filed by Counselor Stephen Hay,
You know what I'm saying?
does now propose that chapter one eighty-one zoning of the code of the city of Pittsburgh
So, no, I honestly.
be amended to create a solar farm component.
Oh, you're okay.
I declare the hearing open.
You're close to all the time.
Or resumed.
He's such.
Counselors, City Solicitor Barrett has informed me that the planning board does not yet have
Go in the middle.
a recommendation for us that this is a, would convoluted be the correct word?
Go in the middle.
Well, complicated.
It's not.
Complicated.
You're good.
Matter.
You tell Anna Burgess, she's the younger girl with the blond hair.
Matter.
I see.
And since we don't have something for them, the recommendation is that we postpone the
You tell her about if you.
hearing.
The first one, her shortest.
It's before you.
Oh, that's.
Mr. President, do we, do we have?
All Larry.
Counselor Dean Tally.
All right, smile.
Thank you.
Smile, Liv.
Do we have any idea of a timeline when we will get something or, because I don't want
Use your teeth.
to have this recessed till the fifteenth and then two weeks after that and that, I mean,
It's a military stand.
is there a date or is there some kind of commitment we can get on when they may be
Is it?
prepared?
I don't know.
We could ask the chair who's here.
No.
Oh, I didn't even.
Oh, like this?
Thanks, Karen. All right, let's go.
I'm just trying to finish up the energy.
Time to leave.
But moving on to the, on to the solar, and I did speak with Solicitor Barrett about
Have a meeting.
it, that I think we need some technical expertise for this matter and that we'd like
You gotta get in every picture, don't you?
to put an application in to MRPC, the Regional Planning Commission, for, they have a call
You gotta go.
a DTLA District Technical Assistance Grant to provide a service to actually write, you
Yeah.
know, write and do the research for the bylaw.
I'll show some.
That would be coming request from the city to MRPC if we could write that request and
You got a slice after?
see if we can obtain that grant.
Yeah.
If we recess it, do we have to have a date?
Sam.
We should.
Okay, the damn with pictures, go on the hallway.
The problem is that we're the date set for two thousand and sixteen, so you should recess
Right, so I'm going to suggest, my recommendation's going to be that we accept the.
to December fifteenth.
Nice job, man.
I think we'll have a better idea.
Stop.
Move that we recess the hearing to December fifteenth.
Yeah.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion second to recess the hearing to December fifteenth, two thousand
Thank you.
and fifteen.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
We are unanimous.
Thank you.
Proposed zoning amendment discussion and vote, one sixty-five fifteen, that the city
Thank you.
council, Pittsburgh City Council, to amend chapter one eighty-one of the code of the city
Thank you.
of Pittsburgh by amending language pertaining to registered marijuana dispensaries. Thank you. Counselors, this is in relationship to my petition.
Thank you.
The planning board has submitted a recommendation to the council, and we can ask questions.
Thank you.
Counsel Bean.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I met with the planning department today, and I'm totally impressed
Thank you.
with the planning board and the work they did with this, with these documents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it wasn't easy, and the time and effort put into it was a lot. I know that when you came before us, you asked us for input. We provided you that, and it seemed to have been listened to as you put together this document, and I feel the document is in good shape, and I'd be willing to vote on it tonight. But again, I want to thank the planning board and the members and the planning staff for putting the hard work into making sure we did it right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? It is before you.
Will the hearing be closed?
A motion that we accept the planning board's recommendation.
Accept the planning board's recommendation.
One sixty-five fifteen.
We have a motion second that we accept the planning board recommendation in relationship to one sixty-five fifteen. Speaking of the motion, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. While we have Solicitor John Barrett with us, there are just so many things in this document that still has to be looked at. There has to be a traffic study.
To establish MMD facility impacts at peak demand times. You know, a lot of those things are still in there, John. What, what do we do about, about that stuff?
That's a special permit, right?
I believe, Counselor Clark, you're referring to some of the criteria or requirements.
Yes.
That a registered marijuana dispensary would need to satisfy, but that would be in the process of their applying for a special permit.
Okay.
To have that facility, and that would be handled by the special permit granting authority, which I believe in the proposed ordinance would be the planning board.
Okay.
So those, those are how things would be processed if you adopt this ordinance.
How about the, the police, fire? Have they looked in at this? I don't think they have.
I, I, well, I believe that the special permit process does provide for comments on any particular application from the different parties.
Okay.
The, the police or fire department. I don't know, you know, if, if the police, I believe, I thought that Chief Martinau had, had reviewed it.
He spoke up against it, if I recall.
Well, maybe, I don't recall if he was opposed to it or not. I, I think the problem, though, Counselor Clark, you have, is that if you don't adopt something tonight, you're going to have, to start all over again, and you will have no ordinance to prohibit these types of activities or control these activities if should somebody want to come in.
Okay.
So it's my recommendation that the council do adopt this proposed ordinance tonight.
I realize that the planning committee did a great job in, in the five-nothing vote, so that certainly holds a lot. That's certainly something we have to think of. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Counselor Boschman.
I just wanted to say, and I'm not speaking for the chief, but he was talking about the police on Airport Row, the one they want to open up at the former Asher Pants place. He went down and checked that out. He was down there, and he asked questions, but I'm not speaking for him.
Yeah.
Because I overheard him talking, and he was kind of impressed. He had some concerns on different other things. Other than that, was that.
Counselor Dean Tally.
Thank you. At the last hearing that we had with the planning board, I believe it was on, it was in October, sometime early October, my concerns were first off where the dispensary sector of the ordinance and the cultivation sector of the ordinance would spell out what the zoning requirements would be from the map perspective. The dispensary would be an industrial and medical district zoning only, and the cultivation would be in light industrial and industrial. And that, to me, would be satisfactory, and I'm glad to see that that's what it has in the ordinance. Granted, if there's anything about this ordinance that any of us may not like or we see down the road, like any other ordinance, we can file a petition to amend the ordinance, and I have never been against the cultivation side of this equation. I believe the city's desperate need of industrial development, and the dispensary side of the equation, although I am adamantly against having a dispensary in Pittsburgh, for the.
Hey, Marcus. Marcus.
I'm not going there with anything.
Yeah, but I think now is now, we're new people, flip and know our fans.
Hey, I'm, I'm trying my best to get people to not think that I'm pulling the strings behind the scenes.
But you're on, but you know what I'm saying?
There's normal times they gotta hear that.
Yeah.
So, no, I, I honestly, I haven't talked to anyone. I don't know.
Oh, you're, okay, you're always talking to Jay all the time, he's such, he's such a good guy.
Yeah, look at us. Go in the middle, go in the middle. It's not, you're good.
You can tell, like Anna Berg, she's the younger girl with the blond hair.
I see. You can tell her about if you, if there's two hundred.
Shorter and shorter. Oh, that's right. All right, smile. Smile, Liv, use your teeth. It's a military stand. Is it? I don't know. No. Oh, like this?
All right, let's go, time to leave. Have a meeting. You gotta get in every picture, don't you? You gotta do it.
Yeah. I'll show some.
Got a little phone, huh?
Yeah. You gonna miss last after?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. Sam.
Okay, the damn with pictures, go, go out in the hallway. Right, so I'm going to, my recommendation's going to be that we accept the.
Oh, that was a great drive at the end of that hearing. It was a great drive to tie it. I had to go to bed. I don't know how. I'll say, councilors, let me get back to business. Communications from Her Honor, the mayor. The Honorable Councilors, I hereby appoint and ask for your confirmation of the following individuals as permanent reserve police officers for the city of Pittsburgh. Julian Salis, 303 Shea Street, Pittsburgh, Mass. Tyler Robichaud, 260 Chester Street, Pittsburgh, Mass. Daniel, oh, this one's fun. Minicello, 27 Ward Street, Pittsburgh, Mass.
We'll refer to the appointments committee. Second.
Appointments. Uh, other communications, councilors just should have received a, uh, letter from Perick.
Would it be placed on file? We see that in our package, I think, and other letters.
And the second is the Pension Reserve Investment Management Board, they would be placed on file in the clerk's office. Moving forward to the agenda, Finance Committee, Councilor Deena Tally.
Mr. President, Finance met last Tuesday, November 24th. 2:30, 2:15, Board of Licensed Commissioners to delete the $25 fee for dancing in the licensed commission fee schedule and replace with a $25 fee for entertainment. The Board has discussed the past practice of a fee for dancing and believes the distinction is outdated and better described as entertainment. The entertainment application and fee of $25 will cover all types of entertainment, including dancing, that was granted. 2:25, 15, there being hereby is appropriated the sum of $14,800, seem to be charged against available funds and credited to accounts as follows, $10,800 to City Clerk Personal Services and $4,000 to City Clerk Expenses, that was adopted. 2:26, 15, the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Federal Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY16 VAWA stop grant in the approximate amount of $44,775 for the purposes of said grant, that was adopted. 2:27, 15, that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Mass Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development for the Mass Works River Street Grant in the approximate amount of $3,050,000 for the purpose of said grant, that was adopted. 2:28, 15, there being hereby is transferred the sum of $12,338.71 from CDBG Year 40 Code Enforcement to CDBG Year 41 Parks and Playgrounds, that was adopted. 2:29, 15, order that the loan, Order 15314, adopted by the City Council on July 1st, 2014, authorizing a borrowing of $23 million for sewer system projects be amended in its entirety to authorize an appropriation and borrowing of 31, 34 million, 34.1 million dollars for various wastewater projects as per the attached, that was amended to 31.25 million, and that was held in committee. And 2:30, 15, ordered that the city of Pittsburgh has authorized the appropriation and borrowing of $4 million for sewer system projects and ongoing repair and rehabilitation of the sewer system infrastructure, that was adopted.
Motion to the Finance Committee report be accepted. Uh, councilors, if we could have the motion from 2:30, 2:15 up to 2:29, 15, the next one needs a roll call vote. Which one, both?
2:30, 15 needs a roll call. So if you could have everything up, except that.
2:29, 15.
Motion second, the 2:30, 2:15 up to including 2:29, 15.
Councilor Deena Tally.
Thank you, I just wanted to speak briefly on 2:29, 15, that was held, and the reason I wanted to speak is, councilors who weren't there that night, um, it's probably imperative that you make every effort to go to the next finance meeting if you weren't there, only because there was a lengthy discussion about this particular matter, and just from my purview as the chair in the last meeting, I was very disappointed with the presentation in terms of not enough information provided about the status of the sewer separation project in general, how well we've been doing on the loans. This item before us, we originally approved at $24 million, and due to some errors and some miscalculations, the cost grew to nine million, up, went up to nine million, actually now it's down to 31, so it went from 23 to 31, so eight to nine million dollar increase. It's a big mistake. So, I ask that everybody in the council, if you can make the next finance meeting, please be there when this gets presented again, because there were a series of questions that we had, that there were not adequate answers for or answers at all, and this is a concerning item as far as I'm concerned.
Councilor Bean.
President, uh, like Councilor Deena Tally was saying, I met with the commissioner today, actually myself and Mr. Boschman met with the commissioner, I had a number of questions that haven't been answered yet on, 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 on the whole project, not just this part of it, but you know, where we are in the totality of it, uh, the letter that was first received that we, that mentioned the loan order and the potential of a rate increase, and then the shortfall of 11 million raised red flags with me. I still have, uh, waiting for some responses from the, from the commissioner who I met with today, I'll give them about a week or so to do that, but, uh, until all those numbers and everything's in place, I feel I wouldn't be comfortable voting on this one or 2:30, 15 at this point.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, to accept the Finance Committee recommendation on 2:30, 2:15 up to and including 2:29, 15. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 2:30, 15, from the Finance Committee, is it ordered that the city of Pittsburgh has authorized the appropriation and borrowing of $4 million for the sewer system projects and ongoing repair and rehabilitation of the sewer system infrastructure. The recommendation from the Finance Committee was that it be adopted.
Motion to accept the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Motion second, that we accept the Finance Committee recommendation on 2:30, 15. Uh, loan order first reading, it will be a roll call vote. Councilor Deena Tally.
I voted against this, um, last Tuesday, and the reason I did is, even though the project's only $4 million, there is, there's a large concern, there's a greater concern that I have with all of these loan orders coming before us. We've already appropriated several millions of dollars in loans to this division for the sewer separation project and the infrastructure improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. We don't have any status or understanding of how well those projects have gone from a cost standpoint. We don't have any idea of a status on schedule. We don't have any idea of future loan orders that'll come before us, when they're coming before us, for how much, and whether this will impact the rate structure. We actually are going into this whole thing blind, and my concern with approving these loan orders, big or small, is the wastewater department, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but my concern is, because this department has that consent decree, where the feds are breathing down our back, any mistake, any oversight, ah, what can you do about it? Just give it to us anyway, because we have no choice. I, I don't want to think that that's the mentality, but when you miss an estimate by $9 million, any loan after that point, to me, is suspect until we actually absolutely have certainty as to what is going on with this entire consent decree project. No one in this room, or not most in this room, I bet can say with confidence where we are from a percent completion standpoint in this entire consent decree that we have with the feds. And the concern I have is this 4 million, where's, where's the, um, where's the guarantee that this 4 million isn't going to come back to us in a year and it's going to be 7 million? I mean, until I get some concrete information on status, on cost and schedule, and how that'll impact the rates going forward, I'm not going to support any loan order, and I don't really care what the feds do, because the feds don't have to deal with our residents, the feds don't care about our residents, the feds don't care about whether they can afford it or not, we do, and I'm going to stake my, stake my claim on this and not support any loans going forward or rate increases until I get an absolute certainty of what's going on. For me to vote for this without any of that information, that's not right on my part, that's my opinion, but again, I'm getting tired of hearing the excuse, well, it's a consent decree, we have to do it, we have no choice. Yeah, we do have a choice. The eggheads in Washington may not care what our people pay here, but our people that pay here, our residents by and large, are not wealthy. So the cushy people in DC that make 300 grand a year, dictating to other cities and towns how to live their lives, maybe they can send checks to us and help our residents pay for these ridiculous bills that they've imposed on us. So, I think this shouldn't be a pass either, I think this should go back to finance and be held until we get a comprehensive overview of everything regarding that consent decree. Thank you.
Councilor Caddy.
I want to agree, I don't think this, uh, until I know more about this, I don't think I'm willing to vote on this tonight, I think it should be held in committee.
Councilor Bean.
Echo what I said earlier, I, I think until we look at it, in the total picture of all the loan orders we've taken out for the consent decree and for the, the separation project and that, I need to know the complete picture, where we're going with the funding, the, you know, how we're paying it back, what that means to the rate, I know, what are we talking about for rate increase and that, so whether it's 4 million, 2 million, or 1 million, I think we need to have the whole picture in front of us, so we're making an educated, uh, decision on that. And don't forget, a lot of this has taken place during another administration at the wastewater, during Joe Jordan's administration now, Jeff is there, um, and I'm not sure how it all transitioned and what was happening back then compared to now, but I think, uh, an overall picture is the best way to look at this before holding it. And they're going to be doing construction in the winter, so I don't think it's going to be a, a key, you know, a killer to hold it for a couple of weeks until we, uh, have them all together.
I rescind my motion to approve and make a motion to hold.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to hold 2:30, 15 in the Finance Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Public Works Committee oral report, Councilor Caddy.
Public Works met on November 24th. Be granted three petitions, uh, 2:10, 15, Councilor Joel Caddy to clean soil and leaves off a sidewalk on West Minister Street from Eureka to Overland Street. 2:21, 15, Councilor Paul Boschman to repair or replace sidewalk on Duma Street in front of Number 8. And 2:22, 15, Councilor Paul Boschman to put an apron in front of driveway at 371 Oak Hill Road.
Motion to accept the Public Works Committee report.
Let's take it.
Motion, a second, that we accept the Public Works Committee report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Want to order, Mr. President, so the other ones are just, the other ones listed on the.
We're held in committee.
Will just be held in committee?
We're held in committee.
Yes.
Right. Uh, moving forward. Recessed hearing, 094, 15, the Pittsburgh City Council pursuant to the unanimous affirmative vote on April 22nd, 2015, on petition 38, 15 filed by Councilor Stephen Hay, does now propose that Chapter 181 zoning of the Coda City of Pittsburgh be amended to create a Zoller Farm component. I declare the hearing open, or resumed. Um, councilors, um, City Solicitor Barrett has informed me that the, uh, Planning Board does not yet have a recommendation for us, that this is a, would convoluted be the correct word?
Well, complicated.
Complicated.
Better raises.
Matter, and since we don't have something for them, um, the recommendation is that we, uh, postpone the hearing. It's before you.
Mr. President, do we, do we have?
Councilor Deena Tally.
Thank you, do we have any idea of a timeline when we will get something, or, because I don't want to have this recessed till the 15th, and then two weeks after that, and that, I, I mean, is there a date, or is there some kind of commitment we can get on when they may be prepared?
We could ask, ask the chair.
Oh, I didn't even.
Thanks, Karen.
I'm just trying to finish up the M and J.
Yeah.
But moving on to the, on to the solar, and I could speak with Solicitor Barrett about it, that I think we need some technical expertise, um, for this matter, and that we'd like to put an application in to MRPC, the Regional Planning Commission, for, um, they have a, called a DTLA District Technical Assistance Grant to provide a service to actually write, you know, write and do the research for the bylaw. That would be coming, request from the city to MRPC, if we could write that request and, and see if we can obtain that grant.
If we recess it, do we have to have a date?
We should, the problem is that we're the date set for 2016, so you should recess to December 15th.
Move that we recess the hearing to December 15th.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to recess the hearing to December 15th, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are unanimous. Proposed zoning amendment discussion and vote, 165, 15, that the City Council, Pittsburgh City Council, to amend Chapter 181 of the Coda City of Pittsburgh by amending language pertaining to registered marijuana dispensaries. Councilors, uh, this is in relationship to my petition, um, the Planning Board, um, has submitted a recommendation to the council, and, um, we can ask questions, or, Councilor Bean.
I just want to say, I, I, I met with the planning department today, and I'm totally impressed with the planning board and the work they did with it, with this, uh, with these documents, I know it wasn't easy, and the time and effort put into it, um, was, was a lot, um, I, I know that when you came before, you asked us for input, you, we provided you that, and it seemed to have been, uh, listened to as you put together this document, and, um, I feel the document is in, in good shape, and I'd be willing to vote on it tonight, but again, I want to thank the planning board and the members and the planning staff for putting the hard work into making sure we did it right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? It is before you.
Will the, uh, hearing be closed?
Start a hearing.
Motion. Or, or motion that we accept the planning board's recommendation.
Accept the planning board's recommendation.
Motion, approve, 165, 15.
We have a motion, a second, that we accept the Planning Board recommendation in relationship to 165, 15, speaking to the motion, Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. While we have, uh, Solicitor John Barrett with us, there are just so many things in this document that, um, still has to be looked at. There has to be a traffic study.
To establish MMD facility impacts at peak demand times. You know, a lot of those things are, are still in there, John, what, what do we do about, about that stuff?
I, I believe, Councilor Clark, you're referring to some of the criteria or requirements that a registered marijuana dispensary would need to satisfy, but that would be in the process of their applying for a special permit.
Okay.
To have that facility, and that would be handled by the special permit granting authority, which I believe in the proposed ordinance would be the Planning Board.
Okay.
So those, that, those are how things would be processed if you adopt this ordinance.
How about the, the police, fire, have, have they looked in at this? I don't think they have.
I, I, well, I believe that the, the special permit process does provide for comments on any particular application from the different, uh, parties.
Okay.
The, the police or fire department. I don't know, uh, you know, if, if the police, I, I believe, I thought that Chief Martino had, had reviewed it.
He, he spoke up against it, if I recall.
Well, maybe, I, I don't recall if, if he was opposed to it or not, um, I, I think the problem, though, Councilor Clark, you have, is that if you don't adopt something tonight, uh, you're going to have, to start all over again, and you will have no ordinance to prohibit, uh, these types of activities or control these activities, should somebody want to come in.
Okay.
Um, so it's my recommendation that the council do adopt this proposed ordinance tonight.
And I realize that the Planning Committee did a great job in, in the five, nothing vote, so that certainly holds a lot, um, that's certainly something we have to think of. Thank you, thank you, John.
Councilor Boschman.
I just want to say, and I'm not speaking for the chief, but he was talking about the police on, uh, Airport Row, the one they want to open up at the former Asher Pants Place, he went down and checked that out, he was down there, and he asked questions, but I'm not speaking for him.
Yeah.
Because I overheard him talking, and he was kind of impressed, he had some concerns on different other things, other than that was that.
Councilor Deena Tally.
Thank you, at the last hearing that we had with the Planning Board, I believe it was on, it was in October, sometime early October, my concerns were first off, where the dispensary sector of the ordinance and the cultivation sector of the ordinance would spell out what the zoning requirements would be from the map perspective. The dispensary would be an industrial and medical district zoning only, and the cultivation would be in light industrial and industrial, and that, to me, would be satisfactory, and I'm glad to see that that's what it has in the ordinance. Granted, if there's anything about this ordinance that any of us may not like, or we see down the road, uh, like any other ordinance, we can file a petition to amend the ordinance, and I have never been against the cultivation side of this equation, I believe the city's desperate need of industrial development, and the dispensary side of the equation, although I am adamantly against having a dispensary in Pittsburgh for, for a variety of reasons, we cannot ban it outright for the Attorney General, so we have to regulate it, and this, I believe, provides a good, uh, overview of the regulations for such a business, uh, so I will support this tonight, thank you.
Councilor Joseph.
I just want to say, I'm, I'm against the cultivation, distribution, and everything else that is involved with this, because I know once you get from medical, you get to recreational, and I know medical is so widely abused, um, that anybody that has a, a neck ache or a back ache gets a, gets a, a prescription for marijuana, and it's just, it just gets out of hand, and then everybody that has illegal possession of marijuana just whips out their medical card and says, hey, sorry, I'm just smoking it legally, um, but that's, it's been made legal, we have to make regulations, and I appreciate the work that was done to protect Pittsburgh, um, and leaving us from being wide open, so I'm all for adopting this this evening.
I'd just like to say that it's been a process, since I put in the petition originally, uh, my original intent was to get something on the books so that we did have some regulations and guidelines, so that if people do come forward and wish to do either of the things, um, we, we have something in, we can hang a hat on that. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion, a second, to accept the, um, Planning Board's recommendation, um, on 165, 15.
Mr. President, if I might, just elaborate on that motion, that, uh, apart from just accepting the Planning Board report, you are adopting this as the, uh, an amendment to the petition for the new, amending the zoning ordinance.
Okay. We are accepting the Planning Board's recommendation to amend the petition to include their language on the ordinance.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Ordinance, 219, 15, an ordinance of the Chapter 169, Section 24 of the Coda City of Pittsburgh entitled Parking Prohibited at All Times as Most Recently Amended, be further amended by inserting therein name Eastland Way, Side North, location from intersection of Lincoln Street to intersection of East Street, referencing petition 75, 15, final reading.
Motion is sent to its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
Second.
Motion, a second, the 219, 15, be sent to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. 220, 15, ordinance amending Chapter 157, Section 46, 47, and 48 of the Coda City of Pittsburgh by deleting said sections in their entirety and inserting in place thereof the following, City of Pittsburgh Department of Public Works trench restoration policy referencing petition 206, 15, final reading.
Move 220, 15 be sent to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
A motion, a second, that 220, 15 be sent to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Petitions.
220, 15.
To, including 244, 15, be sent to their respective committees.
Second.
Motion, a second, the 240, 15, up to and including 244, 15, be sent to their respective committees, Councilor Deena Tally.
On the, uh, 240, 15 has to be sent to a public hearing for January 19th, 2016.
Okay, right, be sent to their respective committees, and 240, 15 to a public hearing on January 19th, 2016. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Your turn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned, thank you, councilors.